...2015, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and imposed it on a voluntary board on December 23rd, 2014, and sent to the Starlet and Home Intermediation Committee in compliance with the Open Fathers Media Laws on New Jersey. Hold on.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Grover.
Yeah.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councilman Canary. Councilman Sedano. Councilman Baumann.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Yeah.
President Perkins is here.
Is anyone here wishing to speak? None in public, so you know, close up public portion speaking.
Okay.
We'll move on to the agenda.
Letter dated May 1st, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding contract to Gold Type Business Machines Inc., East Rutherford, New Jersey, for the furnishing of an electronic traffic ticketing system for the police department for a period of two years in the amount not to exceed $80,000.
What do we do now? What is this? Yeah. Exactly. Do we have any ticket system there?
Yes, but this is connected with the license plate reader. And it's also an additional of, it's additional handheld machines for the police traffic.
These have a handheld machine?
Yes.
Any other questions?
You said additional? Do you know how many more?
I don't, but I can find out that number for you.
I agree.
Is this something where they would give a license plate reader to issue somebody a citation?
I believe, yeah, I believe the systems are connected. So when they do the license plate reader, I believe it connects to these handheld machines, but I'll confirm that for you. Because the existing ones we have are primarily used by the parking violation officers. So I think these are additional ones for the police officers as well, and also being interconnected. But I will find out.
Why are we paying them? Aren't we just buying the equipment?
Well, yes, we're buying the equipment, but it also has to do with, the software also has to do with how many tickets we pay them based on how many tickets are issued. You can see in the back, it was a bid. But I will get you more details.
There's only one bidder.
Yeah. But I will get you the details.
Okay. First here, $80,000, seventy-two. Anything with over fifty-two cents. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman.
The $80,000 just to pay for the two years? Or is it $40,000 on a yearly basis?
No, no, no. It's the first $80,000 tickets issued would be seventy-two cents a ticket. And then after we, so the $80,000 and one ticket would be fifty-two cents is what we paid to the company.
If he says $80,000, those $80,000 tickets.
He says not to exceed $80,000.
For a two-year term.
Correct.
The director recommended, there must be something good.
But I will find out additional details.
Okay, everyone still with that? Okay. Put it on.
Letter dated May 1st, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding contract to Law &amp; Supply Company, New Jersey, Inc., Egg Harbor City, New Jersey, for the purchase of police and homeland security equipment and supplies for the period April 21, 2015 through April 30, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Any questions?
What exactly are we buying?
We're buying general supplies, and we're also, according to the director, we're getting new shields for the police department and for the SWAT team.
Any other questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1st, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Garden State Highway Product, Bynum, New Jersey, for reflected cheating for the Public Works Department for the period April 29, 2015 through April 30, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Okay, any questions?
Letter dated May 1st, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Atlantic Tactical of New Jersey, Inc., New Cumberland, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of police gear, equipment, and supplies for the police department for the period May 1, 2015 through April 30, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Firefighter 1 LLC, Spartan, New Jersey, for the purchase of police and homeland security equipment and supplies for the fire department for the period May 1, 2015 through April 30, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $60,000.
Any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Firefighter 1 LLC, Spartan, New Jersey, for the purchase of police and homeland security equipment and supplies for the fire department for the period May 1, 2015 through April 30, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $60,000.
What's different?
The contract numbers, they're different state contract numbers.
They're getting different merchandise?
Correct, different merchandise. And it's various equipment, when I spoke to Director Vitulio, also with the new class coming on, so it's for the course of the year.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to ESI Equipment, Portion, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of Polmetro Core Rescue Systems Equipment for the period May 1, 2015 through April 30, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $40,000.
This is the repelling, the ropes and the repelling system that the department.
Any other questions?
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body reject all bids received on April 21, 2015, for the provision of an administrator of records for abandoned vacant and foreclosed properties within the city for the Department of Planning and Community Development and authorize the purchasing agent to re-advertise for same.
Any questions?
Here we are, we award somebody to do this job?
Yeah, they couldn't do it.
They cannot do it?
No, there, yeah, there was inconsistencies in the, in the response, in the bid response.
Why can't we, why can't we just get?
Just can't seem to get this off the ground and running.
Because we just need to pick up people from inside to do this.
We were, I was.
Yeah, I don't want, yeah.
I think they said it couldn't handle it, that's why I heard.
No, but, yeah, they can't handle it.
So then we'll just reject the bids.
We are doing it now.
No, that was a request.
But my, but the point that the President is saying is that if this is something that needs to be done, why don't we train some of our people then?
I understand, I will certainly relay that information to the director. I think that the business decision had been made previously that it could have been more lucrative with regards to private companies doing it, but we have had twice where the bids have been inconsistent and inadequate.
Why can't we try with more time if we don't find anybody?
No, because it's wasting too much time, and we have stuff, we have abandoned properties all throughout the city that need to be taken care of.
That didn't just happen overnight. And they've been having abandoned property here for a hundred years, so another couple months in a hurry.
Yes.
I would have seen someone outside to do it, didn't have someone inconsistent inside to do it, and you got to train them, then they're, you know, I heard that they're not doing it properly. It's a big problem. Whether it happens to a private company doing it, like, the director has indicated that when he was here before, I think we need to just go ahead and put it back out for good.
No, you can't even find anybody to do it.
Well, it's tough to find the right person, that's just, you gotta find the right person to do it.
We have a lot of people running around looking for jobs, who have degrees, who have college degrees, who have a whole lot of experience and know the city. We don't use existing staff, we put on one or two more people. Okay.
What are we doing?
We've got to reject the bids.
Reject the ask for it.
We're just rejecting the bids.
Reject it and then put out the shit.
No, we're not putting out bids. We're rejecting the bids.
Letter dated May 1st, 2015, from the City Attorney requesting that your honorable body consider the following ordinance for introduction and approval. Ordinance authorizing aerial easements and draft grant of easement for portions of Amboy Avenue, Bayway, and a portion of South Front Street. Ordinance vacating Krakow Street and portions of Burlington Avenue and reversion, reversion of vacated streets to adjoining properties. Ordinance vacating Rockefeller Street and reversion of vacated street to adjoining properties. Ordinance authorizing vacation and sale of a portion of former relocated Bayway and draft bargain and sale deed or transfer of ownership of a portion of former relocated Bayway.
Got any questions? Councilman?
Yes, he's moving forward, and so we want to see this get going, since possibly have that bridge built, so I have more problems with moving this forward than that.
Okay, great.
I want to hold up progress.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from the City Attorney requesting on behalf of Waste Management of New Jersey, Inc., that your honorable body consider to consenting to an assignment of the redevelopment agreement, which is currently with Elizabeth Marine Terminal LLC, concerning property on South Front Street to be purchased and used for the trucking of sealed containers of municipal waste material, subject to waste management, being awarded a contract from the City of New York, and this will mean substantial revenue to the city. And he's set out some points of interest regarding what may be included in the agreement if everything goes through with New York.
Okay, any questions, Councilman?
Before.
Torres.
Bullet point.
This is your ward.
He says, there is a side on York Street?
Yes, the current Elizabeth Marine Terminal.
On York Street? That's, oh, that's the railroads behind the.
The railroad side on York Street.
Yeah, Metallica.
No, there's transport. Any questions, Joe? This is all contingent upon the receiving the contract.
Correct. And it's expected to be a 20-year contract with the City of New York.
Madam President, just to, this is not a simple subject that we actually, we're gonna be working on this, and talking about 20 years, we're gonna have garbage from New York coming to Elizabeth?
The barges will be coming in and be loaded on the trucks and be taken out.
Barge will come in, loading what? Our garbage on their?
No, the barges will, the sealed barges will be coming, the sealed containers will be coming in on barge, loaded on trucks, and then trucked out.
From Elizabeth?
Correct.
And which route they're gonna get out of from the waterfront? Elizabeth Avenue?
I do not know that, but I believe, I do not think that is the route, no.
It's the turnpike.
The turnpike.
One and nine.
Right, no, get on the turnpike.
But how are they gonna get on the turnpike?
Which route they're gonna go?
Maybe relocated Bayway, maybe we could put in there, since it's South Front Street. Relocated Bayway is probably the most safest route, I think.
Can we find out more about this? Because this is a very important thing that will probably affect, you know, our city very drastically, and when you, when you move waste from a major city like New York into our city, you don't know what kind of waste they bring over, and what could happen to our citizen, our neighborhood, our children, our school vicinity nearby. I don't find this to be something just to put on the agenda too much anymore. I don't see the rush.
All due respect, all due respect to the Councilman Maza, but the Councilman of the Ward said to put it on, all due respect.
I don't think you read the information. You just got them like I did.
Well, we don't, we not.
I understand.
We don't know.
I have a lot of respect for the first ward, but it's something serious that we really should be.
Can we get that information?
Sure, I'll find out what is the route that the trucks are going to take.
There's also a fee.
One person at a time, one person, please, gentlemen.
About, there's a fee, who negotiated for this fee that would be paying the city so much?
The Law Department has negotiated.
Oh, he does, I negotiate, yeah.
Yes, the Law Department.
And this is the first time we know about it. Is this kind of deal that was supposed to be going on London, or they're moving to Elizabeth?
I do not know, I was not privy to those conversations.
I, I think we should find out more disclosure from the Law Department, any more information besides this little blurt that we're getting tonight, you know, otherwise this is a matter of an investigation, I will call the Attorney General, Madam President.
Okay, just relax.
Oh, no, relax, this is something serious for the future.
No, I'm not saying, Rob, too, I'm just, I see.
I understand, because this is something important, and like.
But it's not a personal relax.
I understand, so you do whatever you have to do, but personally, you know, there's more to be answered. It would be wise if the first ward would reconsider, table this, and we'll find out more information, I don't see the rush.
It doesn't, there's no need to table, and we don't know.
Why there's no need to table? Something that is important here.
Because this is not a meeting where you table items, this is an agenda setting.
Council, what happened if we get the information?
Excuse me, Councilman?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have to keep order. As I stated earlier, the Councilman of the First Ward said put it on pending the information. If he's not comfortable with the information that he receives from the Law Department, we will pull it at his discretion.
But, Madam, this is not something that just affects the first ward, this affects the entire city and the life of the many people. You might have to go through a portion of my ward, the second ward, or whatever, no, no, no.
And if that is the case, we will all do respect, do what we need to do next.
I don't think the first ward is actually in a hurry to put this on the agenda.
I don't think we need to speak for each other.
I'm only saying, I mean, you know, the, you know, like we do, we push things and then we finalize it really again, if you have a question, we follow up a question after. This is something, you know, West Management will be paid $351,000?
No, we will be paid.
From West Management to us?
Correct.
And what happened when we don't have a contract with West Management anymore, it would be a different firm will come in in the city and give us a better price.
I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Excuse me, please, yeah, please. Are you finished, Councilman Maza?
No, I'm not finished.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable at all with this thing.
Okay, then you know what you can do when you're not comfortable with an item that's on the.
Okay, no problem, I'll make sure that the Attorney General investigates it.
Okay, that's fine.
This is what I, if I don't get the information, it's serious, this is a ground of investigation, the Law Department worked on something without the Councilman authorization to try to get into it, without even knowing about it in any meeting.
Okay.
You know, this is, let it be for the record, this I want to be on record.
Can you put it on the record?
Definitely.
It is.
It will be on record, and I will make sure that I hire an attorney to represent me as a councilman and to represent the rest of the tax grade of Elizabeth, to find out what's going on with this deal.
Thank you.
Something that really stinks.
It's garbage, Joe.
It is garbage, definitely. Me personally, it really stinks. So we'll find out, there's no way.
Okay, good.
I might be wrong, but I'm looking for the interests of my citizen, my taxpayers, and for the future interests of the city, especially when we have somebody that's already on a bid and a negotiation, that already has a contract with us.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yeah, and reading, just reading this and what we've received, I see that it talks about there is an agreement already existing with Elizabeth Marine Terminal, and we're gonna be getting paid more than what's already in that agreement, and that there is some remediation, and I'm assuming the Law Department has looked at it all really well, and is looking out for the interest of the city and the residents here in the City of Elizabeth. I am also concerned with the route.
Okay, and that's.
Because I don't want to see this, if they go relocated, going down Bayway Avenue, you know, I'm not gonna be too happy about that, I don't think residents are gonna be happy about that either, so, that's what I would be concerned with, this point there.
Okay, you're welcome. Yes, Councilman Grover?
Bridget, can you find out what the land tax?
Yes, because this will be, the, according to what I'm reading, the land taxes will be continued to pay at the assessment rate.
What is that amount? And when they say continue to pay, so the pay increases that go forward for the next 20 years?
Correct.
The other question I have for you is, will be an increase annually based on Consumer Price Index? We were just told that CPI is 1%. So I think it should be Consumer Price Index plus 2% or plus 3%?
It doesn't already been, uh.
Because we got, we got stuck with that thing with the repairs consumed.
Hello? Can anybody contest me? Yeah, you can sit, you can sit.
Yes.
With the, with the contract that we did, the lease with the sewer line, he said $10,000 above that would be our responsibility, and that, we built no increase up to there.
Yeah, I believe the CPI, I think it should be at least 2% of points, yeah.
Should be plus 2%.
Because right now it's, what, 1.7 or 1.9? That's very realistic.
So, 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 Council, you're asking the Law Department to go back and renegotiate this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
What, is that what Councilman Maza's, what they're saying?
No, what Councilman Maza was saying, a whole lot of.
I know he's, I know he's different, different phases, but he said, they already negotiated this, someone said they already negotiated, which they has, but now you're asking them to go back and look at it for the 2% or 3% index, which I kind of concur to that, but, you know, I mean.
So I'll go back and I will confirm or ask what the potential truck route is, what is the amount of taxes being currently paid, and bring to the attention that in addition to the Consumer Price Index, if possible, it would be an increase of 2% to 3% annually. Okay, I'll bring this back up.
And if they, answer all the questions, get that information to us before, right, next week, next week meeting, I think the Councilman from the Sixth Ward should answer, hope it satisfies your questions, all that information.
I have a question that I.
Excuse me, gentlemen, excuse me, neither one of you were acknowledged by the chair to speak, but I am very liberal when we end this agenda-setting meeting, but I do want to give Frank Questa an opportunity to say something.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, is it on?
Yes.
It's still on? Yeah, go put it on, you want it on?
What happened to our marina, was still being dinner to be used by our citizens for their boats, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, this is nowhere near the marina park. This is up on the industrial line by the Gothos Bridge.
Yeah, by the Gothos Bridge. Yeah, it's way over there.
No, no, not, not the Elizabeth Marina.
Right, that's what I put it.
No, 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 not the Elizabeth Marina, Elizabeth Marine Terminal LLC, that's the.
On the other side of the river.
I figured.
Yeah, no, no.
The bar just coming in.
South, way over.
Yeah, not the Elizabeth Marina, yeah, no, no, no.
We spent so many millions of dollars on.
Yes, yes, no, 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 this is not our marina, this is.
Councilman Torres, is he, are you, are you riding him tonight?
No, no.
I'll take you up in front of your house.
Yes, no, I, not the marina, no, no, not the marina.
Yes, more your way.
This is not the first ward, this is.
Madam, not, not, I take back what I said before, with the only exception about the route, I'm concerned about which way to go, the rest.
First and second ward is.
I thought you were moving the marina.
No, 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 not the marina.
This is typically in the second ward.
This is what I suggest, that.
Now, now, I realize, yeah.
Nelson, Torres, please take my.
Because you said back over by how?
Take him for a ride, don't dump him in.
Yeah, by, over by Lorco and.
Self-dodge?
On the other side of the river.
It's really no, this part of it's.
By chemical control, right?
Yeah.
It's in both of you.
You know where's that?
Not the marina.
Yeah, where you talking about?
No, you're a thousand percent, one time.
Take everything.
That's okay.
Erase.
Okay. Next. Okay.
Letter dated April 28, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to credit senior citizen disability and/or veteran deduction for tax year 2015 pursuant to a delineated list in a total amount of $4,500.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 28, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to credit refund a senior citizen deduction for the tax year 2013 and 2014 on the property located at 11 John Street totaling $500.
Okay, put it on, any questions?
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2015 state fiscal year budget by budget amendments, Chapter 159.
Any questions?
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that transfers for the 2015 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that transfers for the 2015 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that in compliance with State Fiscal Year 2015 Appropriations Act requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated thousands benefits. Bless you.
Any questions?
And they have an attachment.
Okay, I'll put it on. Put it on.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting the City Council's approval of the Fiscal Year 2014 Corrective Action Plan, with the Fiscal Year 2014 Order of War.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 5th, 2015, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider an ordinance to amend segments of Chapter 13, Point 16, Point 130E, 4 and 5 of the Code of City of Elizabeth, to set new sewer rates effective July 1, 2015.
Hold this one, hold this one, let's call it on.
Can we just give an increase on the sewer rates?
No.
And everything go through?
I'm sorry, I believe that had to deal with industrial customers.
Just in portion, now we're raising the 1%, 1 centimeter, 3/4, whatever.
We were told that the customers that were being serviced by the rent, they're not getting, not get any hours.
Right, that's correct.
Well, last year, the, last year there was no increase to the residential customers.
Right.
Or to the customers, but this is coming into a new year based on, on usage and increase. Essentially, it's a little bit more than a dollar a week. I mean, actually, yeah.
Dollar most of the time.
No, because it's $14 a quarter.
Right.
So it's $14 a quarter, so it's a little more than a dollar a week, so about $4.75 a month. And this was based on the litigation and agreement that the BODs and the TSSs will be assessed utility-wide. Previously, we just charged the BODs and the TSS to the, those that hold, that held the joint meaning permit, but in the litigation that was settled last year, it was agreed to assess it utility-wise.
So they're taking side in favor of the residents? Right? Just in favor of the residents?
They will be assessed, again, approximately $14 a quarter.
Yes, we're, Councilman.
Back to the negotiation of last year, what happened to those $4, $5 million that we were supposed to get, a $2 million on a yearly basis for two, three years? Would that money be, then we had also agreed to use that money, reduce the, the increase towards the residents?
I think that money is being used towards negating the increase, I think the increase would be higher without that, without that settlement.
So we're already using that?
Yes.
Can we find out?
Sure.
Bridget, can you? I specifically recall, last year, we were told that the lawsuit settlement is going to result in commercial and commercial properties and multifamily dwellings to pay most of the cost, and at page two, it says, "The recent lawsuit settlement requires that all customer classes share." That's not what it was.
No, it's all customers shared, but the commercial would be at a higher rate. So yes, it was accurate that, because if, based on what is here is.
That's not what we were told.
The JN, the joint meaning permit holders will be paying a 37% increase, based on flow, the commercial customers would be, and multifamilies would be a 25% increase, and then the residential would be a 15% increase. And this is an estimate, because it is based on flow.
Pretty sure that we were told that there was going to be an increase.
I believe that there was no increase last year. I believe that there was no increase last year.
No, but once everything was settled, no increase to, um, the residents, the one and two family home residents.
And again, based on my conversation with Mr. Zingare, there was no rate increase last year on residents.
Can we have, have you check that over again, make sure that's what?
Sure.
Because I, I, I concur with Councilman Grover, because I know we, we have this thing up, yeah?
Yeah.
Real, real, that was one of my pet peeves, like a increase on citizen.
Yeah, all was...
Well, absolutely, absolutely. And we, matter of fact, we didn't settle it till we settled from the lawsuit, remember?
Right.
We carried this on till we left, we got the lawsuit settled.
That's correct. I believe they were putting a three million up front.
Mm-hmm. I believe that's all being applied, but I will confirm that.
Yeah, just confirm that, get back to us.
And, yeah, absolutely, and again, the note I had that there was no residential, residential increase last year.
Okay.
Look at that additional information.
Yeah, we just want to wait to get information.
Sure thing.
No, that is...
Oh.
That is settled. It's not... Letter dated April twenty seventh, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to amend the resolution dated December ninth, two thousand fourteen, between the City of Elizabeth and Jefferson Hall Daycare to provide a prestigious summer program specifically to allocate an additional thirty thousand dollars and to extend the contract to December thirty first, two thousand fifteen. Any questions?
Schedule program.
Letter dated April twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body approve a letter of support for Pets First, Inc., application to the New Jersey Economic Development Authority Small Business Fund for assistance in the acquisition and renovation of real estate located at two forty eight, two fifty six, Third Street, in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand dollars.
What is this? This is the...
Um, Pets First, which is a business located in the City of Elizabeth, is making an application to the New Jersey Economic Development Authority for, um, financial assistance for expansion of their business, and this letter is supporting the expansion of the business. There's no funds being committed by the city.
Are they already there, Councilman, like, your third street?
I believe that this is a new location for them.
Okay, because it said to expand that business, did I read that?
Yeah, they're already a business in town, but they're expanding the business, uh, to this location.
Where's the current location?
I believe they're on Virginia Street.
So that'll help, uh, Councilman go, go on out.
And they make apparel for animals.
They make a what?
They make apparel for animals.
So cute.
Each one.
It's a booming business.
Okay. There's a lot of animals running around the first ward on...
That's my code.
Okay, put it on. Letter dated April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the Flood Plane Administrator to endorse the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey's appeal and to submit supporting documentation from the city in order to appeal FEMA's findings related to the preliminary revised FEMA flood insurance rate maps for the Newark Liberty International Airport.
This potentially could help businesses located in the immediate area with regards to the flood insurance cost.
It's about to put an extra burden on the businesses to have.
In the event the FEMA regulations go through as is, yes, it will create an additional burden. Uh, the Port Authority of Newark International, Newark Liberty International Airport undertook a study, and had reached out in discussions with the Flood Plane Administrator. So this letter is in support of their findings.
Can we get a list of the bills and businesses that will be affected?
Sure.
Letter dated May fourth, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute all necessary documents to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, a five-year consolidated plan for CD forty-one fiscal year two thousand fifteen, uh, to two thousand nineteen funding for grant allocations. Community Development Block Grant, two million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Emergency Solutions, two hundred, two thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars. And Home Program, six hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars, plus any program income and unprogrammed funds available. Any questions? Put it off. Letter dated May fourth, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept and sign all appropriate documents for the Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Program, two thousand fifteen, for the removal of the former Bayway Polish Home Structure located at six two five Poloski Street, and the removal of the dilapidated structure on two oh six South Second Street for an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Let me follow it. Please put it on. Been waiting for this for a while.
No questions.
Thank you.
Letter dated May fourth, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Stanley J. Real Estate Appraisal Consultants, Colonial, New Jersey, for real estate appraisals of new city-owned vacant parcels located at three two five South Park Street, three twenty seven South Park Street, and three thirty nine Marshall Street, for a total cost of two thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions?
Yeah. What are we going to do with these properties?
Uh, once, uh, we get the, um, once we get the appraisals, the, uh, the director will negotiate with New Jersey Community Capital to purchase these properties from the city, and then they would develop affordable housing.
Why weren't these on the regular auction block?
I do not know. I can ask that question.
Because, I'm sorry, because we did have properties that were on the auction block, did not get auctioned, and there were nobody that bid on them. So those, why don't we give to, uh, New Jersey Community Capital, since nobody wants them? And these properties, who I think are properties that we could actually generate some money from, should go on the auction block.
I will ask those questions.
Okay. From New Jersey Community Capital. Can we get the principal?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, right now, this is a vacant lot where people use it as a dump ground.
Yeah, but we never sold it. I could tell you that this is prime property, people will want these lots. There will be builders that will want these lots, because they're buildable lots in a nice, nice streets.
It would improve the street act.
I wonder why weren't these on the auction block?
I don't know, I wasn't part of this conversation.
Those are properties that were considered irregular properties. Not these? No, not these, but why weren't these on the auction block?
I will check, but I think Councilman Gonzalez made, when we did auction off the properties, some of them were non-conforming lots, I don't, yeah, I don't know that I can find out.
I mean, there were a lot that were not sold. Those we can give out.
Oh, it's my understanding that the New Jersey Community Capital will be, will pay, assess market value. I don't think that they're...
I, I know.
But I, again, I will find out the questions.
If you got properties out there, if you feel like the average person, private sector, might have been anybody going to want to buy them.
Okay, put it on next. Okay. Letter dated May fifth, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to sign any and all documents necessary in connection with substantial amendments to Community Development Block Grant Program fiscal year two thousand fourteen, relocation, increase municipal award by fifty thousand dollars. Eport Presbyterian Center increased funds for their Gather Guide Room Program by fifteen thousand dollars. Elizabeth Development Company increased funds for their on-the-job training program by fifty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars, fourteen cents. Home Investment Partnership Program, First Time Home Buyers Program fiscal year two thousand eleven, reallocate forty thousand dollars to the rental housing program to help close a funding gap to Parker's Walk Urban Renewal LLC, Parker Road, new construction of ninety-six affordable rental units. Fiscal year two thousand twelve, reallocate forty thousand dollars to the rental housing program to help close a funding gap to Parker's Walk Urban Renewal, Parker Road, for new construction ninety-six affordable rental units. Fiscal year two thousand thirteen, reallocate forty thousand dollars to the rental housing program to help close a funding gap to Parker's Walk Urban Renewal LLC, Parker Road, with the new construction of ninety-six affordable rental units, twenty-five thousand dollars, Parker's View Urban Renewal, Parker Road, rehabilitation of a sixty-unit affordable rental unit building, fifteen thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand fourteen, reallocate eighty-five thousand dollars to the rental housing program to help close the funding gap to Parker's View Urban Renewal LLC, Parker Road Rehabilitation, sixty-unit affordable house, rental unit building. Any, any questions?
I'm going to look at this, I guess a lot of residents didn't take advantage of that first time home buyer pool. Well, it sounds like being reallocated.
Yeah, we're in the, um, they need to be sent within a certain timeframe, so we're in risk of, of, um, so this is the best way to utilize the funds based on, uh, the director.
Any questions? Letter dated April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Yunusi Group, Inc., Kinnon, New Jersey, for the demolition of six twenty-five Poloski Street at a cost of one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars.
Is that?
He doesn't have it. Public Works. Sorry. You need that?
Maybe it's out of order.
I don't have it. Do you have any handles?
I don't have it.
Same as I have it.
Let's knock it down.
And in the event, um, in the event we are successful with the county grant, it does have a matching fund requirement, so this would satisfy the matching fund requirement for the previous grant that was discussed.
He has.
Yeah, she did.
Okay.
Okay. All right, great, thank you, yeah.
Okay. Letter dated May first, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached for the boarding up of said properties in the amount of six hundred seventy-one dollars, thirty-four cents. Any questions? Cut it off. Letter dated May first, two thousand fifteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of five hundred fifty-seven dollars, twenty-seven cents. Okay, any questions? Put it off. Letter dated April seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, from the Police Director, requesting authorization to amend chapter ten, point twenty-eight, point fifty of the Code of City of Elizabeth, Schedule Three, no stopping or standing to establish the south side of West Graham Street from Bellevue Street to Almore Avenue as no stopping or standing all time. Any questions? Letter dated April twenty-one, two thousand fifteen, from the Police Director, requesting to amend ordinance number four, five, six, two, no parking on the east side curb line of West End Place and street cleaning on Fridays from one P.M. to four P.M., specifically to have the no parking anytime on the west side and no parking all times except for street cleaning on Mondays, one P.M. to four P.M. on the east side of West End Place. Any questions? Letter dated April twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, from the Police Director, requesting to establish handicap parking spaces in front of the premises located at First Ward, three twenty-four South Park Street, personalized.
Put it off.
And First Ward, two forty-seven Fulton Street, personalized.
Put it off.
Letter dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, from the Police Director advising that the roadway, Glimpse Realty Way, has been changed by the property owner to International Boulevard. Letter dated April twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen, from the Police Director, advising that the following handicap parking spaces are to be deleted, First Ward, one oh eight Enslie Place, and Sixth, Fifth Ward, six thirty-two Court Street. Letter dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, from the Fire Director, requesting permission to sell twenty-five surplus portable radios and accessories that no longer serves the needs of the Elizabeth Fire Department to the Borough of Kenilworth Fire Department for one dollar.
Why are we only getting a dollar?
True.
Are they?
Yeah, they're taking them off our hands.
They are storage things.
Obviously worth something.
They, they absolutely.
Obviously, it's valuable.
Yeah. Okay. At the last regular meeting, April twenty-eighth, your honorable body authorized an insurance policy with James River through Agent of Record Hughes Plumber and Associates, covering the city engineer and his staff for the period May tenth, two thousand fifteen, to May tenth, two thousand sixteen, at a cost of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. There was no certificate of availability of funds for said policy, so the resolution adopted April twenty-eighth must be rescinded.
Hold on a minute.
Yes.
In the next fiscal year.
In the next. Not, we have the ready to go on.
Probably post-camp training.
No. Regularly, which would be... The twenty, well, Tuesday, the nineteenth, and then it'll be voted on, the twenty-sixth. Okay. Okay. Anything else? Councilman Grover has requested, um, the tax abatement ordinance is due... Due to expire June fourteenth of this year, two thousand fifteen. The tax abatement ordinance is due to expire June fourteenth of this year, two thousand fifteen. Did you get it? Did everybody take a look at it? I did. This is, this is it. Okay, down. In the full.
This is the, uh, this is the ordinance setup. Gives no construction.
Yeah, this is fine. Okay, I need to take a look before we put it off. This is it. All this, I don't know, but I need to do it before we put it off. Okay, so you want to hold it? Yeah.
I'm going to tell children, just didn't want to...
Yeah. Okay.
This is what spurred revitalization of Elizabeth Port Community Airport. These guys are still here.
What's that?
That's, uh, three properties we want to do.
Okay. Okay. All right. So a request has come in from, um, Ms. Vanessa Castro, requesting an autistic child in area sign at eleven forty old Hill Place. You put that on for me? Okay. And then a commendation for First Lady Shamika Warmly, fifth anniversary, from Councilman Ballman. That's it for me.
Can I be, excuse me?
Yes, sure.
Did you take off the rubber bands? You didn't have to.
I thought it was mine.
You got one, I got one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and come.
Okay.
Bridgette, can we find out why we don't have, uh, five, uh, they call them buses, but ambulance running, uh, in the City of Elizabeth?
but ambulance running in the City of Elizabeth? I know, again, safety of our residents is our top priority. So can we just find out why there's only two ambulances running?
I will definitely check that. I do know that we are advertising to buy new ambulances. Unfortunately, there was a problem with the previous bidders. So we're in the process of re-advertising for new ambulances.
So due to equipment?
Yes. But I will reconfirm that. But yes, it's primarily due to equipment, which we are buying new ambulances.
Okay. No, that's it, ma'am.
Pat. Pat, I have a couple memorials given to Yolanda Jenny Chiquito and Bessie Jacolon that passed recently. Also, I received an invitation from the Cuban Club. May 17, there was a parade in Elizabeth. I see that we have up the Asian flags. Is that possible to get the Cuban flags up also on Elizabeth Avenue? In the three-quarters of the parade, there's a My Ward. Can we get the flags up?
When you talk to the Cuban, the organizations themselves, but the city don't do that.
The city doesn't do anymore?
No, you give the flags to the city.
The organization, like we did with the Italian, the hundred years, we give it to the city, and then we get it back.
Yes.
Okay. Although that was a good idea to have. You're from the old country, right? So the Association of Frank Questor will pay for the flags. And that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Pat.